Let me do that. It will be. We can turn on mics.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. All right. Mics are going hot in three, two, one. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to this Hamilton Township Council meeting. I have an opening statement to make. My name is Rick Ty. I am the president of the Hamilton Township Council. And we want everyone to please be advised that if during the course of this meeting, the software currently being used to conduct this teleconference should encounter an unexpected interruption, the meeting will immediately be paused for a period of 15 minutes. During that time, we will attempt to reconnect the session. If we're unsuccessful, the meeting will be considered recessed until another future meeting date can be determined, at which time we will continue with the agenda. We will immediately push out a notification on our website and social media sites, Facebook, Twitter, and Instagram advising of same. So this meeting is being held with the benefit of public notice as required by the Open Public Meetings Act. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Mr. Caravelli?
Here.
Ms. Phillips? Here. Mr. Whalen?
Here.
Mr. Reparo?
Here.
Mr. Ty?
Here. And I'll ask everyone to rise for the salute to the flag and the invocation. How would you lead us in the salute? What do you lead us?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Georgia's stand. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Lord, guide this council body to serve the people of this township with compassion and humility. May we pray for our township, country, and world during this pandemic and know that it is through your everlasting light that we can navigate through the darkness. May we use this time alone in solitude or with family as a means to reorganize our priorities and appreciate those who are dear to us. May we also pray for those members of our healthcare system, doctors, nurses, and medical providers as they embrace the virus on the front lines. Bless us and help us through this difficult time. To your praise and your honor forever, we pray. Amen.
So I just want to take a moment to thank all the citizens who are joining us on the telephone this evening. These are obviously not optimal circumstances, and we look forward to seeing you back in council chambers as soon as we are able. I'd also like to extend a special thank you to everyone in the clerk's office, in the Hamilton Township IT Department, and in the Department of Law for all of your hard work and any work through the weekends to make sure that we would be able to do this in a way that's proper and legal and accessible to the public. So thank you, everyone. And with that, Madam Clerk, shall we move on to the minutes?
Certainly. We have the January 14th and January 29th, 2020 fire subcommittee minutes for your approval.
Do I have a motion to approve the minutes? I'll make that motion.
I'll second the motion.
Madam Clerk, go ahead.
Mr. Caravelli?
Yes.
Ms. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Whalen?
Yes.
Mr. Reparo?
Yes.
Mr. Ty?
Yes.
Passes 5-0. Under your communications, 1A is a front and center dance studio to conduct tag day solicitations of shop right number 566, located at 1235 Route 33 on Saturday, May 16th, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. I'm sure this will be, whether it is in performance with the emergency orders currently in place.
That said, do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion on communication 1A.
I'll second it. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Caravelli?
Yes.
Ms. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Whalen?
Yes.
Mr. Reparo?
Yes.
Mr. Ty?
Yes.
Passes 5-0. Moving on to consent agenda items. We have items 3A through 3Q for your consideration.
Any questions from council on any of the consent agenda items?
Seeing, yes. The only question I had was for 3C, just the transfer of some of the funds from 2019 to 2020. The one number that I saw was a little bit higher was the increase in the garbage and the recycling. And I believe that was due to the increased cost that we were expected in 2020, that we were anticipating under the MCIA agreement with the vendor. I think that's why that's coming up, but I just wanted to just confirm it.
I'm just going to go to the backup materials.
Okay.
And while you're looking at that, I'm just going to talk about consent agenda item 3A for a moment, which is a resolution amending Resolution 20-009, appointing council members to various boards and commissions for the year of 2020. We're amending that to appoint Councilman Whalen to be the council liaison for the Hamilton Partnership, the Commission on Persons with Special Needs, and the nonprofit advisory commission. Councilman Whalen, thank you for your willingness to serve on those commissions. With that said, we were waiting on guidance on the consent agenda item 3C. Any other council questions or comments in the meantime?
So for 3J, the Hamilton Marketplace Restaurant, that was considered going there, that was going to be in, but they didn't follow through with the plans, correct? That was, that's how it?
That's the area across from?
Falls, I think.
From Falls?
Yeah.
3J, K, and L are all related to that?
Related to that, yes.
Okay.
Exactly. It's just a refund of the fees that they paid.
Okay. And 3F is extending Trenton Sewer to the Duck Island redevelopment site. Really, the only access to that site is through Trenton, although it's in Hamilton. Okay, okay.
We'll get you the backup for that.
Okay.
For that item. I'm assuming that that is the reason. I just don't have the backup in front of me. So I'll give that for now.
No, that's fine, that's fine. Okay, with that said, do I have a motion to move consent agenda items 3A through 3Q?
I'll make that motion. 3A through 3Q on the consent agenda.
I'd like to second the motion. Madam Clerk?
On the consent agenda, Mr. Caravelli?
Yes.
Ms. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Whalen?
Yes.
Mr. Reparo?
Yes.
Mr. Ty?
Yes.
Passes 5-0. Moving on to ordinances. We have ordinance 5A, which is 20-009. An ordinance amending and supplementing the code of the Township of Hamilton, New Jersey, Chapter 485, vehicles and traffic, Article 2, parking, Section 485-19, handicap parking. This is to repeal a space established at 224 Ock Road by ordinance number 2010-003. This is second reading and public hearing.
Excuse me, Madam Clerk. Just a point where it's ordinance 4A.
What did I say? I'm sorry.
I thought you said 5A.
Could have.
Okay. With that clarified, any council comment? Seeing none. So we are going to be allowing public comment only on the specific ordinance that we are discussing. As this is the first time we're doing this electronically, we're going to allow three minutes per person with comments limited to the specific ordinance. So at this time, are there any members of the public wishing to comment on ordinance 20-009? We're waiting for members of the public. We're going to give them a minute just to... I don't believe there's going to be any public comment on this particular ordinance. Seeing none. Do I have a motion to close the public comment portion?
Mr. President, I'd like to close the public portion, the public comment portion, and move ordinance 4A. It'll be 20009 on second reading.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
It's supposed to be yours. Okay. Madam Clerk?
On the motion? Mr. Caravelli?
Yes.
Ms. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Whalen?
Yes.
Mr. Reparo?
Yes.
Mr. Ty?
Yes.
Passes 5-0. Ordinance 4B is ordinance 20-012. An ordinance amending and supplementing the code of the Township of Hamilton, New Jersey, Chapter 485, vehicles and traffic, Article 2, parking, Section 485-19, handicap parking. This is to establish a space for 353 Woolsey Street. This is second reading and public hearing of the matter.
Any comment from council? Seeing none, we will open it for public comment. And it's just going to take us a moment longer to get through this, although we don't anticipate anyone wanting to comment on this.
It kind of cuts out the Q and A session for about 10 seconds or so.
Oh, so I'm not?
You're live now, but it cut out ready for announcing the Q and A session.
Okay. So when you hit the button, I should wait for around 10 seconds before? Okay, good.
So did they hear him make that? Did they hear him make that announcement? Or should he make that announcement again?
So I was just commenting. It's going to just take us a few extra seconds to queue anyone up who wants to speak and to move on from each public comment portion just because we can't visually see folks like we normally do in council chambers. So with that said, do you have any members of the public wishing to comment? Seeing none? Do I have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to close the public comment on item 4B, 20-012, and make the motion and move.
I'll take a reading. Do I have a second? Okay, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Caravelli?
Yes.
Ms. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Whalen?
Yes.
Mr. Reparo?
Yes.
Mr. Ty?
Yes.
Passes 5-0. Ordinance 4C is ordinance number 20-013. An ordinance to vacate, release, and extinguish any and all existing or proposed public rights which have been conveyed to the township's proportions of Pearson Drive in the Township of Hamilton, County of Mercer, and State of New Jersey. This is second reading and public hearing.
Okay. All right, very good. So this is the second reading. This is an ordinance pertaining to the Broad Street Wawa. We do want to give the public the opportunity to comment. We will start with council. If any members of council wish to comment. Yes, thank you. Any comments from council? Seeing none?
Just, yeah.
Yeah, I got it.
Just one question. All right, so it's going to move for the second reading naturally, if it moves, okay? And then after that, it'll go to planning. Planning and engineering so they can start the process of presenting this to the planning board, and that naturally will be held also at a public meeting, correct?
Yeah, that is correct, Councilman Whalen. There is going to be an opportunity for the public to come to a planning board meeting in the near future, see the maps, see the plans, and hear our experts discuss that with the developer, which is going to be a good opportunity for them to do that in person.
And this is just giving us just giving us the leeway to make, to keep the process moving.
Exactly right.
Okay.
And may I also add this solicitor stronger the township attorney. If you look at Section 5, if in the case of the application not being approved, this ordinance becomes automatically null and void. So it doesn't happen on that item if the project doesn't ultimately go forward.
So it has to be approved by the planning board in order for this ordinance to go into effect.
Correct.
Okay. So that said, any additional comment from members of council?
Yes, sir.
Seeing none, we will now open it to the public. No. We never get public comment on handicap parking anyway. Yeah, so chances are it was working.
Did you want me to write? Did you want us to write them down or just make sure they stated? Okay.
Are we? No one wishing to comment at this time?
Kevin, I'm going to call in and just try to keep us.
Yeah, let's test it.
Quite good. I'm on the line already, so. Yeah, it's starting.
Okay, good. So.
Hold on, you have Jennifer.
Oh.
How should I get her?
You could tell me caller number one and activate the call, and I will ask them. So I'm going to ask caller number one to give us your name and address, please. Jennifer? Yes. Yes. Hold on one second, Jen. Okay. All right, go ahead, continue, Jen.
My only question was, can you hear me? I was testing the system for you.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's you, yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
It takes about 20 seconds on the listener end for the comment to come in to queue, just to let you know.
Thank you for that input. Ms. Coffee, we appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Any other members of the public wishing to comment? We're going to give it about 20 seconds, and then we're going to entertain a motion to close the public comment section.
Let's make sure we're betting.
All right, so I think we've allowed enough time for the last.
Session is over.
Okay. Is there a pause now? Or are we? We're live, okay. So I'll entertain a motion to.
Okay, I'll make a motion to see no more comments, close the public comment portion on ordinance 4C, and move on 4C, 20-013.
On second reading?
On second reading.
Move to a halt.
Move to a halt. Oh, and move to a halt, I'm sorry.
Very good. And do I have a second on that? I'll second that. Madam Clerk?
On the motion, Mr. Caravelli?
Yes.
Ms. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Whalen?
Yes.
Mr. Reparo?
Yes.
Mr. Ty?
Yes.
Ordinance passes 5-0. Ordinance 4D is ordinance 20-014. An ordinance to vacate, release, and extinguish any and all existing or proposed public rights which have been conveyed to the township proportions of Park Alley Drive in the Township of Hamilton, County of Mercer, and State of New Jersey. This is second reading and public hearing.
Any members of council wishing to comment? No.
Yes, sir.
Related to the last ordinance as well. Seeing no comments from council, we will now open it to the public.
Q and A session has started.
So in order to participate, let's just repeat the instructions. They hit, members of the public can hit.
Kevin, I believe it's a star six, was it?
Members of the public hit, what are their buttons? They hit to participate? Star six. Okay. So you hit star six, and then I'll ask you to hit 1 to confirm. Okay. Okay. Just wanted to repeat those instructions for everyone. We're just going to give it another moment to give the public the opportunity to catch up with us because we're on a little bit of a delay. And with that, seeing no public comment, do I have a motion to close the public comment portion and move this ordinance on second reading?
I'll make a motion to close the public comment portion and move ordinance number 20-014 on second reading.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Second motion? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Caravelli?
Yes.
Ms. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Whalen?
Yes.
Mr. Reparo?
Yes.
Mr. Ty?
Yes.
Passes 5-0.
Q and A session has started.
Ordinance 4E is ordinance 20-015. An ordinance amending and supplementing the code of the Township of Hamilton, New Jersey, Chapter 5, Administration of Government, Part 4, Departments, Article 12, Department of Community Planning and Compliance, and Article 16, Department of Technology and Economic Development. This is first reading and introduction.
No public comment here?
No comment. No public or council comment. We just move on first reading.
I'd like to move ordinance 4E, which is 20-015, on first reading.
I'll second that. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Caravelli?
Yes.
Ms. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Whalen?
Yes.
Mr. Reparo?
Yes.
Mr. Ty?
Yes.
Passes 5-0. 4F is ordinance 20-016. An ordinance amending and supplementing the code of the Township of Hamilton, New Jersey, Chapter 146, Buildings, unfit or abandoned, Article 1, unfit buildings, Section 146-1, enforcing authority, Section 146-2, definitions. This is first reading and introduction.
This is 20-016, Madam Clerk?
Correct.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
Yes, Mr. President, I'd like to move on the first reading of ordinance number 20-016. Thank you.
I'll second the motion.
Madam Clerk?
Mr. Caravelli?
Yes.
Ms. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Whalen?
Yes.
Mr. Reparo?
Yes.
Mr. Ty?
Yes.
Passes 5-0. 4G is ordinance 20-017. An ordinance amending and supplementing the code of the Township of Hamilton, New Jersey, Chapter 5, Administration of Government, Part 5, Boards, Commissions, Committees, and Agencies, Article 19, Board of Public Officers. This is first reading and introduction.
Do I have a motion on first reading?
I'll make a motion on first reading and introduction of ordinance 20-017.
Yes. And a second? I'll second that? Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Caravelli?
Yes.
Ms. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Whalen?
Yes.
Mr. Reparo?
Yes.
Mr. Ty?
Yes.
Passes 5-0. 4A is ordinance 20-018. An ordinance amending and supplementing the code of the Township of Hamilton, New Jersey, Chapter 215, Fees, Section 215-9, Department of Community Planning and Compliance. This is first reading and introduction.
I'll make a motion to move on first reading, 20-018.
A second motion? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Caravelli?
Yes.
Ms. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Whalen?
Yes.
Mr. Reparo?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Ty?
Yes.
Passes five zero. Four I is ordinance twenty dash zero one nine. An ordinance amending and supplementing the Code of the Township of Hamilton, New Jersey, Chapter two twenty-eight, Fire Prevention, Article two, Enforcement of Uniform Fire Code. First reading and introduction.
I'd like to move, I'd like to move, um, excuse me, one second.
Ordinance twenty dash.
Yeah, I'd like to move ordinance twenty dash zero one one.
I'll second that.
On, on first reading, I'm sorry.
Very good. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Paramelli?
Yes.
Ms. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Whalen?
Yes.
Mr. Reparo?
Yes.
Mr. Ty?
Yes.
Passes five zero. Four J is ordinance twenty dash zero two zero. An ordinance amending and supplementing the Code of the Township of Hamilton, New Jersey, Chapter forty-five, Personnel Policies, Section forty-five dash twenty, Employment of Relatives and Elected Officials. This is first reading and introduction.
Mr. President, I'd like to move first reading and introduction of twenty dash oh two zero.
I'll second that motion.
Madam Clerk?
Mr. Paramelli?
Yes.
Ms. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Whalen?
Yes.
Mr. Reparo?
Yes.
Mr. Ty?
Yes.
Passes five zero.
Okay, so that concludes our ordinance, our ordinances for the evening. We're going to move on to public comment. So once again, anyone wishing to comment, you press star six, and then I'll ask you to confirm by pressing one. Okay. We'll give it a moment. Okay. Give me, are we, are we live? So caller number one, would you give us your name and address?
Hi, I'm the manager of our shelter, and my address is Long Center, Tinker Street, and I'm a volunteer at the shelter.
Yes, thank you for, thank you for joining us on the phone today.
Great, um, I want to say thanks, the township for allowing the volunteers to come in while the dog was, you know, things were going on. It does look like it's going to last a while, you know, we were open just a couple weeks, but, um, I just have a couple questions, I'm hoping that maybe you guys can investigate it for us. We're just curious why, right now they decided, I'm not sure who, but I did get permission last week for the volunteers to still come in as well. So right now they're bringing the dogs out to the volunteers who are not, um, not very capable. I'm not quite sure why, if we use the contact, it would, we would think that we could just go take the dogs out like you usually do. And we're also not allowed to take the animals into the place that is, again, I'm not quite sure why, you know, there's something that's still outside. Um, and there would be no contact, you know, really with staff. So if you could try to get us some kind of answer on that, you know, would be appreciated because it looks like it's going to go on for a while, you know, and our goal was to get these animals out, whether there are some animals there that cannot be walked, you know, they're too strong or, you know, whatever, so we need to take them to the playpen to allow them to time out. The longer they're in the kennel, the more stressed they're going to be.
Okay, thank you for your comment.
Thank you.
Did you want to? Just a clarification, this is our business administrator. I'm sorry, this, this is down there, the business administrator, clarification, um, we're still allowed to walk the dogs, correct? So this is just a, a protocol change?
Yeah, I'm not sure why, you know, we, I got permission before this happened, in case it were to happen, you know, I had called the, the, I had called him, I, I, you know, to try to get an answer whether it's going to be allowed or not, and, um, they didn't approve it, you know, but then, you know, when they went in there the other day to walk the dogs, they were, who were told were not allowed to go close, that they have to bring the dog up. So I'm not quite sure, like, if they're trying to, even if one of the ACOs is, they're trying to reduce the contact, you know, with people, you know, up here, things that I would do all the time, so I'm not quite sure why, and why the playpen, to take the dogs until...
Where the, Debbie, where are the playpens located? The play, they're outside the building.
So just, I'm sorry, now, just, I, I, I want to actually finish, my apologies.
No, no, I apologize, that is hard to help see.
Yeah, no problem.
But, um, anyways, that, you know, I'm, I'm not quite sure what the reasoning is behind it, I mean, I understand obviously, like, a dog that we need to keep the contact, you know, to a minimum, you know, but the ACO is, before passing amendments, he still has to bring the dog over on the leash and give it to a volunteer, whereas, you know, the volunteers have only, you know, all the ACOs can just unlock the kennel, and the volunteers just have to take the animal out. And there's, you know, several firms that we've been working with, you know, certain volunteers, that, you know, need to go into the playpen because they're too strong to be able to be walked. So I'm going to be safer, you know, to take them into the playpen than to try to walk.
So just for clarification, um, this protocol, this is a protocol change as we're trying to tighten up the processes in the animal shelter in general, this isn't necessarily associated with COVID-19, this is just about protocols that we put, that, um, that, that are being put in place, um, just to kind of, based on what we've seen and recommendations from other animal shelters in other parts of the state. So this isn't necessarily associated with, uh, COVID-19, but I just wanted to make sure and get clarity that you are still able to walk the dog, it's just a different process, right? So the ACO will go get the dog and bring the dog to you to walk.
Right, right, well, then what would be the process of not being able to take the animals into the playpen?
That, that, I don't know the answer to that specific question, but I, I can tell you, oh, I'm sorry.
Are you asking, so are you asking me if this is a new protocol change or it has to do with the virus?
No, 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 I'm telling you that this is a protocol change that doesn't have to do with COVID-19. This is just that, um, these are just protocols being put in place at the animal shelter as we're trying to, to, to address some of the ongoing issues that have been at the shelter for some time. And in terms of the, the, the other area, I have to check on what the specific reason is for that, but again, all of these are not necessarily, they're not connected to COVID-19, they're connected to the changes that we are, um, looking to make to the, make it to the animal shelter.
And just, uh, this is Rick Ty. This is Rick Ty, just, uh, one point, can you hear me, Debbie? So just one, uh, point of clarification, we were planning to have a Board of Health meeting, uh, tonight, uh, the, the animal shelter falls under, uh, the Department of Health.
Okay.
Um, and so our plan is when we are able to have that Board of Health meeting, a lot of these questions are going to get answered.
Yeah.
That's really going to be the best venue to get an immediate answer. Meanwhile, we can, uh, you know, find out about the playpens and see what we can find out, and we can follow up with you.
I appreciate that, and, you know, I really hope they, if this is going to be something they're going to change, that they reconsider because, you know, we have a such strong brand that even now...
Kind of signal me. Oh, I didn't realize, that was, hey Debbie, I'm sorry, we're out of time. We're out of time, thank you, thank you, Debbie.
She can call back to a friend on the minute, right?
No.
Yeah, okay.
No. We're not doing, we're not doing any callbacks, keep that simple. We're, we're going to figure that out.
Okay, good. And I can go back?
No. No, so just, just to clarify for everyone, uh, we are doing three minutes, there's no second chances, get everything in in the three minutes, uh, just because we are testing out this equipment for the first time tonight to reduce any confusion regarding the queue and making sure that everyone gets heard, we're just going to do everyone once tonight for three minutes.
Please just let the audience know that we have the control to mute them, so when they're tied up, I mean, you declare them out of order or something, they'll automatically mute them.
So yeah, so we can mute people if absolutely need be, but I'm sure, uh, I trust that everyone will continue to cooperate as they usually do. Janice Galonic?
Yes, dear.
Hi, Janice, thank you for joining us.
You're welcome, I would get the message, but I did.
I was going to make sure you got that message if I thought you had it.
All right, sweetheart, okay, so, uh, sorry to interrupt you, the address, oh, hi. Okay, so, I, please, you're going to answer me, I was trying to get it on, but how long is the landfill going to be closed since there are people waiting in the yard?
Wait, the landfill, the eco, ecological.
Yeah, hi, this is Missy Downey, so we don't have a definitive date for when these things will open back up, unfortunately, um, uh, what we're asking those to do is communicate with the township if you have like any specific issue that we can try to maybe on a one-on-one, like on an individual basis if it emerges, but for the most part, this is where we're going to be for some time until we get more guidance to, to move in a different direction. You're welcome.
Um, I was talking to someone, I was in the road and there was a car, and I was in traffic and he stopped and everything, and, um, crosswalks were going down, he followed it down the place, and then it was going into a neighborhood, they didn't go through the crosswalks, and two bags, they, five minutes, they're still putting their clothes without tonight, and everybody approved the wait limit, except for the, the, the transportation that tells a man that when there's blood on the ground, it then reduces the crosswalk rates. And so we've just drafted this meeting because, uh, thinking about, that if they could stop sign those gendered, send out a clear sale from that way all the way down to the sandlot, and we can really help. If they put that at the same ground, uh, um, and, and slow on it, like a four-way stop in terms of the traffic, however, someone told me that hard cash is not allowed to make stops. Is that so?
No, that's not, that's not so, Janice, we can't have four-way stops. Depends on the type of street, you can. They aren't, yeah, it, the criteria, it has to meet some criteria to be a four-way stop.
Right.
So we, so they put the stop sign on sandalwood to make the other street straight through, and that way we're going to, well, there's no way you can change it to a four-way stop, we have to answer ordinance, right, or there's something that's going on that 's wrong.
We'd have to, um, look into what the methods would be for putting stop signs on sandalwood.
We can confirm, we've, we've found out to confirm that I M M is, that those sorts of traffic laws involve the state as well.
So that's where we've had problems with the ox passing through in Cornell Heights, and so your idea, Janice? Okay, Janice, thank you for calling in. Thank you for your comments.
Okay, I just thought I'd give you some food to take on when this, 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 this is coming, so there's things in my community we need to, like, talk to here.
We'll take it under advisement, thank you, Janice. Uh, thank you very much for your support, thank you for calling in and listening. Thank you, Janice. Okay, we're, we're going to... Okay, our next caller, I believe, is Gail Pollak. Caller number three, is it? Do we have caller number three? Okay. Good job. All right, we'd like to, uh, apologize to Kevin Tamam.
He did it, we didn't do it.
Okay. Do we have another caller?
No, that was it, that was it.
Okay, so no more, uh, so do we have a similar, uh, members of the public wishing to comment? Madam Clerk, do we need a motion to close public comment?
No, you don't.
Okay, so we are going to move on to council comment, starting with Councilman Merlin.
I love going first.
Are you still, all right, hold on, we're going to pause for a minute, everyone. Not really. Test, test?
All right, we're back.
Uh, you know what, I have a, a message here from a resident who would like to make a comment, uh, but didn't hear the instructions, so I'm just going to repeat, star six, to make a public comment, and then it'll ask you to confirm by pressing one. Yes. Are we live?
Yes.
Okay, so, uh, I just want to, uh, make sure that we get all the members of the public who wish to comment, so we've reopened, uh, the system for public comment, if you wish to comment, press star six, and the system will prompt you to press one to confirm. We'll just give everybody a, a moment here. If anyone wishes to confirm, wishes to make a comment to council. So we're not seeing any additional members of the public wishing to...
Let's make a change for a second, give it another thirty seconds.
All right, we're gonna, we're gonna give it another thirty seconds.
Q and A session is over, all participants are muted. Q and A session has started.
So once again, star six. So once again, star six, if you wish to make a comment. Test, 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 test. Test, test. Test, test. Yeah, I have, we're back. Okay. So we, it appears that we were having some technical difficulty, once again, we want to open it to public comment, um, the operator's going to hit the button, when he hits the button, you hit star six, if you would like to make a comment. You think it's the PC, or you think it's the server?
Yeah.
Okay, we are... Do, are we getting audio?
So if you wanted to, at this point, you would be in recess.
So let's go to recess, let's make, can I, I'll entertain a motion to go into recess. I'll make a motion to go into recess until we can get the technological issues going.
Madam Clerk, real call.
Mr. Whalen?
Yes.
Ms. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Paramelli?
Yes.
Mr. Reparo?
Yes.
Mr. Ty?
Yes.
Now it sounds better.
Did, did the camera stop too?
No.
We're still being filmed and recorded, everyone.
So using Google Classroom, Google Meet.
What's... We're still broadcasting? Are my show... Testing? Well, our inter, our in-house, test, test, yeah, test, test. When are we recess? Is there a way to post on social media to stand, to make everybody stand by, don't, don't go away, we're trying to get it back up? Is there a way we could post on social media, don't go away, we're trying to... Eileen? Are we posting on social media right now?
Yes, just doing it right now.
Hey Terry, are you able to access the system? All right, we're in recess right now, and we're trying to fix it. So I'll... Well, uh, try and find. Thanks, all right, then keep me posted, let me know if you're able to access it from out there, I appreciate it, thank you. Are we, um... I hear Zoom's having trouble tonight, Toyota. Are we moving on, having, uh, if I can see, it's going to do, uh, meetings, huh?
Look, I've been starting to think that my, my...
One test. To do this? More problem there. So we got to keep talking about air holes, I think there's a lot. I found, yes. What's this, what's going to happen? She's a hairdresser? Testing, test, 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 one, two. Test, test. Our server experience is an internal problem. Please try again later. It's like it's, it's starting up and then it's just running into an issue shortly thereafter.
Yeah, you get the phobia, you can cut your hair off of phobia.
Okay, Rick, so it seems like it's, well, they're in their server, so with the parties, the stuff that rises in the town?
Yeah. Uh, we can always do comments later. So we're not at fifteen minutes yet, how many minutes is it? It's been five minutes, let's wait ten more minutes.
But Brady, what the fuck? Wait, you got Brady from Brady? She's got corned beef and cabbage on her hair.
Right before, I could tell he was, I could tell he was drunk, because all he does is eat.
Test, 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 test. I heard you have thirty million. Testing, testing. Okay, we are back live, we're going to go to council comments very quickly, Chetty, Councilman Merlin. Oh, that's right. All right, we are back online, uh, we're just going to give everybody a couple of minutes to get back with us. We're not currently open to public comment, can we open it to public comment? We're not currently open to public comment. Can we open it to public comment? So we're, we're gonna open it to public comment. We're gonna reopen it due to technical difficulties.
I made a motion to go to recess. Do we have to come out of it?
Yeah.
Yeah, you too.
I made a motion to come up to go into recess.
Oh, yes.
Make a motion to come out.
Can I make a motion to leave recess?
Yes.
And go back, I'm gonna say. Is that a motion? I'm sorry, is that a motion? Second it. Madam Clerk, which call roll.
Mr. Whalen?
Yes.
Ms. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Caramelli?
Yes.
Mr. Papparo?
Yes.
Mr. Todd?
Yes. That was a motion to come out of recess. We believe we are back online. You still hearing me through the phone? So we are back online. Uh, we do want to open it back up to brief comments from the public. We are having technical difficulties. We're gonna ask for your cooperation. We're gonna ask for you to be as brief as possible, and we will do the same and we'll get through this together. So, uh, we are open to, um, public comment now. Anyone wishing to comment can press star six at this time. How many folks are on the meeting?
Same zero and showing me six, so.
We have six people.
Well, actually five people was made.
Okay.
So don't please raise your hand.
Is that right? The Q and A session is live? Cause I have an individual saying they're hitting star six. That's not coming through. All right, it doesn't appear we're gonna be able to reopen the public comment section, so we're gonna go to council comments at this time. Uh, apologize for the technical difficulties. It does look like we are going to be using this or a similar format. Do we have a call? You got kicked out? Did everyone get kicked out?
So.
This is what it's been like to teach by.
Yeah, yeah, Saturday was good. That was good. This morning, it's the first time it happened, and then it was good for forty-five minutes stream.
So we've got some things we're gonna work through.
We need to go to recess. So I need a motion to go to recess.
Motion to go to recess.
May I have a second?
Second.
Madam Clerk.
Mr. Whalen?
Yes.
Ms. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Caramelli?
Yes.
Mr. Papparo?
Yes.
Mr. Todd?
Yes. So, look, this is the first time we're trying to do this. We're, we're doing the best we can under difficult circumstances. I think it's even better that we did this tonight than wait two weeks and then still have this as our only option and then find out that we have these difficulties, so.
What are we using, by the way? What's the name of the?
Free conference call dot com.
I'm curious, cause I'm trying, like, I'm using Google Meet, Zoom. I was Google Hangout.
We tried, we tried.
We've been trying.
Yeah, we, we tried, I mean.
Cause I use it, like, I was telling you, I use it to say, I was going to host a meeting. Everyone else was staying connected and mine kept on. But again, I don't know that kind of.
They're gonna have to fix it. Yeah, they'll fix it. These companies will increase capacity, so by the time we have our next meeting, we won't be having these server issues.
I have one of my kids who needs it. I'm like, are you kidding me, Zoe?
I'll put out a note to the public.
Cause you can't, you can't mute me. Cause I kicked your out. I was like, the point of there being long breaks is to get help with your social stuff.
Yeah.
But again, how many people are suddenly like? That's what I keep trying to explain to your kids, like.
So we, at least, we've been in session for less than an hour. Our typical council meetings are three hours. So I think we can sit here for a little while longer and see if the system can come online and we can finish a proper meeting. Me too, me too. I like it when we leave after we finish our business. Then I'm happy to leave. And by the way, I do have the record for the shortest council meeting ever. A half hour. I am still live on camera. Thank you for bringing that out, Councilman Whalen. Yeah, maybe we can find Kevin, um.
Maybe we can find, after, in the aftermath of this, in the post-game, uh, we can find out what the experience has been on this system and other systems for other organizations and see.
She used this tape, he called me, I gave him a rundown on this. It was Saturday, every one day.
Cause we should ask, um, Hopewell did it differently last night.
Yeah, there's.
Where Councilwoman, uh, Courtney, Courtney, she was actually in her house. Some of the other council members were in chambers. And then somehow they were connected to the public. So I don't know what they used, but we can find out.
I'll find out. I mean, there would be.
They didn't have technical difficulties?
Uh, she, all she did was post a picture. She was about to start meeting.
The limitations of doing it on the phone, uh, are drastic. Have wanting to do it on the phone as opposed to just on the web, you know, Facebook Live or something. It, it takes your range of possibilities down by nine out of ten. Anything you look at and must think, you've just gotta throw it right away, it's just not gonna do with the stuff that.
What about Skype?
Skype, I mean, I don't, I don't really. Yeah, I was gonna say, Skype, you, you have to download it.
What about YouTube?
We could do YouTube.
We could do YouTube in combination with a call-in for callers.
Uh, it's like just having a call-in.
Can you count it in comments as comments? Like, no, I guess I'm, I'm thinking YouTube Live.
YouTube, YouTube doesn't have a lot of live comments, did it?
I can't, I've never used it.
That's why I like YouTube's port, because I don't think they do have typed comments. And that's a part of the problem that was pointed out to me, is you can't have people typing it up.
It would be a double recording, right? You would have the recording up there, the recording on YouTube and the ca, and the phone, so everything would be separate. Right? Cause you're not gonna record that, and then that's separate, that's a separate system. And then we would need another camera for YouTube?
Yeah.
Yeah, a lot of technological.
Finding out the model, that thing.
I know it's, my, my, my mom makes it, my mom makes it always for my sister, cause today's her birthday.
Your sister?
Yeah, my sister.
And also I was told we couldn't have.
But she, uh, she was, she was.
Now, so is it really? We can't do, like, we can't do, like, live. There's a lot of Italian birthdays. We can't do Facebook Live.
Right, he's based on requires him to be a member, so we can't limit. I told you, I got my twenty-three, maybe I'll be a member in a month, and my twenty-three percent. I believe, I believe that's the case. Anything that would require him to become a member, it's not, it's not, um, enough.
We can't, we can't have text comments.
Oh, we were missing Dr. Murphy.
Just like we do in meetings.
They're like Irish Tom Brock fans. So they're doing live, like, yeah, concerts tonight.
What happened on the live stream?
My husband, he goes, you're gonna be back by seven, Murphy!
So that's why.
Sure, did it, when, when? Since we went off? Officially seven-ten. Was that, it's been that long?
No, but it was still that long.
It's been nineteen minutes?
Seven-ten.
No, but we got back off, and he's like, it's one second, wait a minute.
I mean, look, it's only fifteen minutes, you mother, we're not fucking.
No, we moved here in two thousand five and I.
But wasn't at one point they were both open, they had two periods?
No, I take it back.
No, they didn't have one.
So two thousand five was when we moved.
If we were able to host it, then we could have a direct line down there and we wouldn't have this issue. I doubt, I, I doubt that.
Oh, I'm sure, using it.
Oh.
It's about to be free.
Stop being so self-centered.
This is gonna be a problem for a lot of people, not just us.
Yeah. That's what I'm saying. I just, I had to do it a long way from here at some point, so I was like, you know what? I've been, I've been on, and the thing is, like, it's, it's constant.
Through video?
So, for, well, that's the thing, so everybody's doing it kind of different. Well, I use a Google Classroom. Like, there's this screen. You put something on your screen, record yourself telling your kids. Like, the other day I got it to work. I could read the textbook, talk about what, you know, like, I wouldn't. Well, now my computer has.
They what?
It's not working.
I'll undertake a motion to adjourn. We're gonna adjourn. There's no chance that I like to make a motion to adjourn. The system. I'll second that. Madam Clerk.
Mr. Whalen?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Caramelli?
Yes.
Mr. Papparo?
Yes.
Mr. Todd?
Yes. This motion is adjourned.